Don't understand the pledge of allegiance, please. The pledge of allegiance.
...to the pride of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place.
Lori, roll call please.
Karen.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Runkow.
What's her?
Here.
Item number three. Make the motion to adopt it from the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
I just want to point out I put the amounts in for items 11 and 12. They're in Board chair correctly. I re-saved the document that if you looked at the document from the email before tonight and the amounts were not.
Right, we will share. Very good, thank you.
Runkow?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Item number four, superintendents' report. Motion passed. Item number four. Okay. First on the agenda is Marcia Vogelberger as Director of Special Ed, Director of Education and Special Education. Marcia's going to present some of the information as far as where we're headed with Special Ed and some of the things that are happening there.
I appreciate you having me a little bit of time to talk with you. I don't often get to do that because of the confidential nature of my job. But I did want to call to your attention that in the Board Chair folder you'll find a document titled "Special Education A Year Review" and that's what I'll be talking about today. The first one that I wanted to bring you to your attention is our RTI or our IAT process. It's Response to Intervention which is required by law. It is a regular ed initiative, so it's something that we do for children who are at risk and we want to make sure that we're putting interventions in place for them that avoids having them be identified if at all possible. So if you look down there were 47 students K to 12 that were in the RTI process throughout their school year. I broke it down into numbers of kids that were tested and qualified, tested and did not qualify, tested and parents refused. Some students were placed on 504s. Five want to be tested next school year. One is moving and parent chose to retain. There were four referred for testing and parents refused testing. And 12 are discontinued due to progress that they made. So I think when we look at the grand scheme of things, that's a good number. 12 is a good number of kids that have made enough progress that they don't need the interventions any longer. And then seven will continue on for next school year. And in speaking of about education or special education, you can see there that we currently service 174 students in grades preschool through 12. And I put beyond because we do have students that opt to go up to their 23rd birthday. That's an I E P T decision that we determine at each individual meeting. And we work with students. There's 10 disability areas provided by the Ohio Department of Education. I've listed those there. We do have students in almost every category in our district. And we also have the related services of speech, physical and occupational therapy, as well as vision and orientation and mobility. And those are for our kiddos with visual impairments or those that are in wheelchairs or might need walkers to move around. Our students that are in special education are lucky in that they receive services in the general education classroom for the most part with a special ed teacher being available. There are more restrictive environments for students that should need special ed all day or different type of special education program all day. But I am happy to say that in our school district, we only have five students that we have to place elsewhere. Everyone else we are able to educate within our own buildings, which I think is a great thing. They have access to technology. We have Tap-It which is a smart board on wheels. It also is lower to the ground so students can access it in a wheelchair. They can touch it, feel it like any other student would be able to. A Curzwell program which is basically speech to text, text to speech. And it also will, it kind of serves as another way for kids to do tests, they could do it online. iPad, and we do use a new to you and unique curriculum for our students with significant disabilities. We also have the opportunity for our high schoolers to go through a work, study and transition program. So we're making sure that they are really honing in on with the work, study coordinators, their strengths and weaknesses, and we're making sure that they are ready for appointments when they graduate from us. So with that being said, I'm happy to report that all of our students that took the alternate assessment passed. Most of them passed with high scores. The Ohio graduation test, there were 11 students with disabilities that took each of the sections. And I put the first number there is two passed, that second number around the 11 did not. So we're definitely looking at some strengths there, some areas of improvement needed. And then we are waiting on Ohio Achievement Assessment results. So I think overall, it's been a successful year for our students. Every year's different depending on all the suits that we get. But with that being said, I have great hope for next year, hoping to get Curzwell up and running a little bit better, get some training in for our staff and our students, and continue to watch our students grow. Actually, forward.
Marcia, would you explain a little bit or reiterate what RTI, IAT process is there and why that exists?
Yes. I did explain a little bit that RTI is Response to Intervention. Some districts call it, they are mentioned as this team. It's required by law. It's a general ed initiative. And what it basically does is it gathers our at-risk students, those who are in jeopardy of failing class or grade level. And we get together a team of personnel, it could be their teachers, parents always, guidance counselor, coaches, all depending on the supports that that child needs. And we brainstorm strengths and weaknesses. And then we try to put interventions in place for that student. So it has to look different than what your everyday classroom would look like, but it can't be special ed either. So it has to be somewhere in between. If they don't respond well to that, we usually do a four to six week progress. If they don't respond well to that intervention, we may try something new. We don't want to let the process go on too long, but sometimes we pick the wrong intervention so we've got to try something else. But with that being said, what it really helps us to do is to eliminate over-identifying special ed students without having to do so. That answer your question?
Yeah, I just want, you know, sometimes we use these terms and the board doesn't necessarily know the lingo or understand the background behind those or they're reiterating.
Education acronyms and lingo. Is there anything else that you'd like me to clarify or talk a little bit more about?
Thank you for the good job.
Okay.
Thank you, Marcia.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, you emailed me and we talked a little bit about our open enrollment and enrollment in specifically. I wanted to just explain for you, you know, how our open enrollment looks in this district. I would say we're on the positive end and you can kind of get an idea by grade level how that looks. Really, there's only a difference of one student at the middle school. And for the most part, it's fairly well balanced. I know that at one point in the district, we were about five years ago on the negative end of open enrollment. I still think that that has a long way to go for us to look at some of the trends of where kids go and where they don't go. Sometimes it's simply a matter of parents have graduated from certain areas in the county and they want their kids to go there and they live here. There isn't any real rhyme or reason. Choices are exactly made, which they make, they make them for a multitude of reasons. But this kind of gives you a picture if you look at from a building level where we are, if open enrollment didn't exist, where would we be? And it'd probably be about the same. Without open enrollment, certainly makes a few difference for us. You can get a pretty good picture of the cost associated with it, about $950,000 in. You can almost wash that out with what goes out. So we are heavily reliant upon open enrollment. Many of you, when you went to school, you went where you lived and that was pretty much it. Without it now, school districts our size would probably not exist very, very well. And we would define if the state eliminated it, but thrust it backwards and say, okay, we're going to close our doors, you're looking at a big chunk of money that we would lose from the students that we bring in. So from that standpoint, it's sort of a necessary evil. I want to pass out to you something that, you know, we're going to look at moving forward. These are called quality profiles. I have, and anyone in the audience, I'll be happy to pass these out to you as well. In fact, I could have them on and pass them around. These quality profiles really are a nice way to look at. I want to pass out. The quality profiles are a nice way to look at the things that the report card doesn't measure. And I know in recent meetings, we've had discussion about how do we show number seven in the nation in technology? How do we show that 86 represents the highest high school in the tri-county area? One of the ways we can do that is through one of these quality profiles. And I gave you two different ones. The lovely one's probably a little bit better and has some graphics in it. I was at a recent meeting in Mahoney County Educational Service Center that their advertising group or what they're doing with Renee English and Lindsay Samlinette, the things that they're doing, and these are one of the things that they're working on with the districts that are in the Mahoney County Educational Service Center. Their department is expanding. They're basically public relations. They are getting out the word of some of the things that we're doing in terms of public education. Mahoney County Parent Technical has put out commercials that basically emphasizes all of the entities that belong to that Mahoney County Educational Service Center represented in terms of public education. So they're looking for some collaboration between school districts right now. They're looking at putting out a document that will encompass all of the districts that belong to that entity that will showcase public education as a whole. So they're going to take snippets of things that you're seeing in this pamphlet, these quality profiles, and pull them together for all of their districts. You know, we're going to continue to work with Renee and Lindsay to put out some things that are going to promote our school district. And, you know, one of the things that we do very, very well is academics. And it's demonstrated when you go to Heads Above the Rest in this county meeting, and we have the highest number of kids with a 30 or above on the ACT. We're as small as anybody in this county and yet we're highly represented in terms of the academics that we put out. Year in and year out, our scores are as strong as any if not the best. And, you know, I think that a quality profile, one of these quality profile documents will prove some of the things that we're doing that's not necessarily measured in a state report card. So I know that several of the districts in Mahoney County are looking at this. Because we're part of the ESC there, we'll be included in this and I'll be working with Renee to track something out hopefully here in August, if not early September, that will lay out some things for us. So as we look at some examples of quality profiles, we're going to build the full information that we think will be important and maybe it'll help us focus in on some of the things that we're able to do. So the next thing on the agenda is Southside Middle School. Southside Middle School roof is well underway. Last week, they delivered essentially all the materials. It's pretty incredible when you look at the volume of material that they delivered to our school. If you look at the tape, the left is all foam insulation that's not on the roof, that's going up on the roof. And it's all laid out in terms of the measurements and labeled and whatnot as to where it's going to be because it's all tapered. They're in the process of tearing off right now. They're on the seventh and eighth grade section and they are tearing off roof that they weren't completely aware that was underneath. If you look at the right picture on the right, there are two layers of roofing on the seventh and eighth grade section. So we're not sure. They did core samples of this originally. So there may be sections of our roof that only have one layer and there may be sections that have two. But in this case, it's a full tear off. So they're just tearing off, and what they ran into already is they're tearing off two layers of foam insulation with gravel and then foam insulation on top of it with gravel. And it is about six inches thick. The amount of weight that will come off of that building will be incredible. And what will be put back up there will be minimal. You can see on the left, far right corner is Media Center of that area of the building. And they put really about anywhere from two and a half to four inches of insulation depending on the tapered edges and are in the process already of putting on the vinyl roof material, which is what you're seeing on the far top end. They're making a great deal of progress already. This kind of gives you an idea of what you're looking at from a standpoint of the tapered, you're seeing that different, all this is measured out to gradually slope into the drainage areas on the roof. The right side, they staged this from area to area and they have an awful lot of material up there. They are starting at 5:00 in the morning. They're trying to do as much they can in the daylight hours without rain. And they are going to, once the weather breaks, they're going on into the, we're out of the rain and go more into continual days of good weather, they're going to begin at 4:00 in the morning and push this out. So they are telling me that they come up, pretty much guaranteed will be done by August 1. The downside of all the material that's on the roof is that we are going to have some shifting in the building of some of those walls that the weight that was bearing on them before will no longer be bearing on them. And we could have some of our ceiling tile that'll move and shift to a point where we may have to redo some of that. So that's something we'll be watching out for as they're doing this project so that if we have to make some adjustments to that, we're going to have to bring some people in to do that. And on a positive note outside of Southside, Joshua Dixon, I got a notice from David Bruce over at Stroll Architects that Joshua Dixon was a national award winner. The girl, the interior designer, Kimberly Jansen, who designed the inside of Joshua Dixon, put it up for nomination, nominated it for an architectural award, was the National American Society of Interior Designers Award. So we're pretty excited to see that the work that they did, I know a lot of people that come into Joshua Dixon are just really thrilled with the way that that building turned out. And then that's going to be done in Los Angeles, June 22nd. They invited me, but Lori, you're flying me out there, June 21st. Now, actually, he just wondered less, that's going to happen, so.
Thanks, Charlie.
So, yeah, before you ask you have any questions about the roof, the interior presented. Thank you. Item number five, I don't believe anybody from the nutrition department is here. Item number six, principal reports.
My principal's report is in Board Chair. And I'll start with our Race to the Top update, which I also put in there, is we will be doing a continuation for 2014-15. It's called a No Cost Extension Year, and we had to develop a work plan for that. And the work plan included professional development activities and continuing our curriculum revisions. A lot of teachers, high school, middle school and elementary have mapped, but mostly language arts and math. So we're going to focus a little bit more now on science and social studies and get those content areas mapped as well, along with aligning our assessments, both performance based and summative, because that's what the new generation park assessments are asking for. We'll be working on SLOs, Student Learning Objectives. All the teachers have written one and they need two, so we'll be working on that. Also, there's an Instructional Improvement System, which is an online curriculum that you develop, you share with other teachers in other districts if they've already developed a unit on something, and then you can develop your own and customize it, as well as it'll give you data analysis on any assessments that you put into the Think Gate. We'll be working on park assessments. Also, based on data that Mr. Hostetler shared from the OGT, as well as Dixon's diagnostic data, we'll be working on writing and written expression, especially constructed response. The kindergarten readiness assessment, those teachers will continue to train and implement, and third grade reading guarantee. Also, I have under professional development, the principals will be participating in a recalibration for us to be able to observe teachers for the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. Mr. Martin told me it's three hours long online, so we're looking forward to that. Dave's already done. Are you? Under student achievement, our third grade reading guarantee, reading improvement and monitoring plan students will all be promoted to fourth grade. I'm happy to say the students either had to have a 392 on the Fall OAA or the district opted to give them a vendor assessment that's approved by the state. If they scored a certain percentage, it's norm-based, they were able to be promoted. I'm still waiting for those scores on June 16th, but I didn't want to wait that long in hopes that those kids would do well, and they all did. The students that were left did pass the Terranova. For fourth grade, I had 15 students on the high honor roll this year and 40 students on the honor roll. For fifth grade, 21 students on the high honor roll and 18 on the honor roll. I put district data there for our diagnostics, clearly on track numbers, spring reading benchmarks if students met or were above accuracy, and math. And you'll see under writing, I put that that's a building goal. Those percentages are too low for my liking. Preliminary OAA data on June 16th, there are downloadable files for administration to see for third grade, on June 23rd for fourth through eighth, and then district reports will come out July 9th. Under other, I had the interior design award listed, and I also put that there was an electronic textbook pilot project grant that I did. And it's sponsored by Ohio as America, Ohio Historical Society, and I did get that grant. And they're going to do it for two years and it will allow fourth grade to get Ohio activities, workbooks, social studies books, all electronically. I'm going to work with Mr. Martin on putting those on our computers, so I'm excited about that. That's my report.
Yeah, and a big deal, the third grade reading guarantee, that term, is we don't have to retest those students.
Exactly.
If they do not do well.
If we didn't choose, right, if we didn't choose to do the Terranova, we would have had to provide a week of intervention for those kids. And then the Ohio Department of Education would have shipped us the repeat of the OAA the week of July 7th through the 11th, but we don't have to do that.
So that's a pretty big deal, in fact, legislation, but in that position with this third grade reading guarantee, that essentially this test allowed us to test our kids another time before they got out of school so we knew, we could talk to parents, they knew where they were.
Right.
So that was pretty critical, so thanks for all the hard work.
Southside Middle School Good News Report. Try not to repeat anything that's already been brought out. Marcia hit on our testing, Kim hit on our testing, Mr. Mook took us through the roof, although we did have a complaint, we would like the snazzy music and some pictures of me possibly before it's all over, like Dixon. Yeah, like on a bull desert, like Dixon had, something upbeat music, so. There was a complaint already about how boring it was. Michael Jackson, oh, Michael Jackson, yeah. But the roof, Southside Middle School roof going down, we are planning on reopening and getting back into it as soon as possible. August 4th is what we're shooting for, if the construction permits us. Some student awards, two Southside Middle School students, Abby Rambo and Marissa McDonough, have been accepted to attend med camp at NEOCOM this summer. We've done really well here lately. We've had students, I think, three out of the last four summers be accepted to NEOCOM. And the girls will be able to get a close firsthand look at medical procedures and possible medical careers. So some thanks to Mrs. Schnobach who works with the kids when they apply for that and has really done a great job of getting our kids into that program. And also, as Kim hit upon, honor roll, fourth nine weeks, especially in middle school, sometimes kids seem to want to let down, but we had another fine semester. We had 57 students that received grades that placed them on the distinguished honor roll. And then another 75 students with grades worthy of the honor roll status. So the fourth nine weeks, our students didn't let up and continued to work hard and get some outstanding grades. So that is the Southside report.
Okay. Columbian High School, just to piggyback on Dave's, Bruce Wiggins was also accepted to the NEO-UCOM summer camp. Scheduling is almost complete. New offerings will include Intro to Business, that'll be a dual credit, computer apps, dual credit, mobile app design and video game design. So got quite a bit of interest from the students and Mrs. Waller's finishing up scheduling right now. AP classes are underway and students are already working towards classes for next year, so kudos to them. I'm going to let Jason Martin, he's worked really hard on the Straight A Fund, he has pretty good news and hopefully even better news in months to come.
Hopefully better news. We should know by July 3rd. The state is giving out $250 million in round two of Straight A. There were 1,481 intends to apply out of those 1,481. They narrowed it down to 227 applications, ours is one of them. There's a rubric, there are five factors they're looking at at round one of the scoring. One, are you collaborating with other districts? Two, are you partnering with businesses? Three, are you taking into account student learning, is that a primary focus? Are you being fiscally responsible and does this program actually help your five-year forecast instead of hurt it? And are you taking advantage of shared resources? And we received yeses in all five of those categories and it's one of 33 applications that can say that. So we're hoping that they'll take all of that into account and give us some much news. I'll let you know next month.
Under some good athletic news, Chris Canal was named coach for the Ohio Junior Freestyle Team. This team will compete throughout the state of Ohio and will compete in Oklahoma City June 26th through 29th. Joining Coach Canal will be Chris Jones. He made the team, made the Ohio team and will compete in the 170-pound weight class. Kind of wrapping up spring sports, under track, Shayla Ray set the 100-meter hurdle record with a time of 60... record with a time of 16.56. County champions included Sky Kramer in the 300-meter hurdles, and Shayla Ray in the high jump and 100-meter hurdles. ITCL champions were Sky Kramer with the 300-meter hurdles, and Shayla Ray with high jump and 100-meter hurdles. District champions included Noah McBride for long jump, and Shayla Ray for high jump. Regional medalists included Addie Dunlap, she placed fifth in discus, and Noah McBride placed sixth in long jump. Softball, ended up with a varsity record of 22 and 5. Sectional champs, they broke eight team records. Madison Rossler, she broke three individual season records. First team, ITCL, included Elise Hammond, Maddie Macklin, Lauren Schluter, and Madison Rossler. Second team included Sierra Ross, Holly Goddard, Carly Saunders, and Navi Kerr. And honorable mention was Haley Tone. Baseball finished with a record of 4 and 14. Honorable mentions were Bryce Franken and Mitch Davidson. That concludes my June report.
Thank you. Item number seven, public input. And just so that everybody understands the purpose of the public input, just so that anyone who wants to can address the board, that does not mean that the board is going to answer any questions, it's just that, it's input from the public. We ask, and we always ask, that everybody submit something in writing, we've had two people that have done that. Thank you for following that procedure, and the idea of that is just so we know, one, who wants to speak, and two, what they're going to address. So, with that, I'm going to ask Wendy Pancake, I believe you're the first name on the list.
Hi. First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak. Tonight, I would like to address the board concerning Darcy Quinlan. Ms. Quinlan has been given the opportunity to receive her master's degree in adaptive physical science or physical education from Slippery Rock University on a full-ride scholarship. She has requested to Mr. Mook for a one-year leave of absence, which she has been denied. I am asking Mr. Mook and the board to reconsider this decision. Ms. Quinlan has been an asset to our school, to our community, and most importantly, to our children. As a soccer coach, she has inspired our daughters to strive for their personal best, not only on the field, but off as well. For example, my daughters relate to a soccer game, so coach made them sit out, knowing that it could be at the cost of winning a game. She has taught them to stand up for what they believe is important. She not only taught them soccer, soccer skills, but she also taught them responsibility and integrity. Last winter, my younger daughter wanted to play basketball, it was her passion. She went to a couple practices and knew the kind of atmosphere that was created on the basketball court was not for her. Once again, Coach Quinlan stepped up and allowed my daughter to be the assistant to the seventh-grade boys' basketball team which she was coaching. She didn't have to do that. These are my personal experiences with Ms. Quinlan, and other people have experiences with her as well. But the opportunity that she has been given to receive her master's in adaptive physical education can be a huge benefit to our school. Three years ago, our district took on the responsibility of the multi-handicap unit. Our district owes it to these students and families to serve them the best that they can. What better way to serve these students than with someone with adaptive physical education degree? I believe that we took on responsibility to fully educate our students with handicaps, and now is the time for us, as the board and the community, to step up and provide for them better opportunities. This is not going to cost the district any money. In fact, it will be a savings to the district for one year. And I know that she was denied the year of leave of absence because in the teacher's contract, that she, according to the sabbatical leave, that she has not been with our school for five years. But I also know that in the contract with the teachers, that there is a section that talks about other leaves that could be granted to people, perhaps in Ms. Quinlan's situation. I am asking you to reconsider. Ms. Quinlan has been a good role model, she has been there for the students whenever they need them. My older daughter, who graduated this year, she couldn't be here tonight, but she wrote something down and asked me to read it. It says, "Coach Quinlan not only taught us the game of soccer, but she gave us so many valuable skills for our lives. Coming into my junior season, I had an ACL reconstruction surgery the past December, and was still unable to do physical activity. Instead of looking at me as an injured player, she saw potential in me and gave me the opportunity to excel. Coach Quinlan shows love and compassion to every student at CHS. She teaches with such excitement and really supports all of us in what we do. I would understand if she chose the option to go back to school, I would probably do the same, but CHS would be losing one of the best teachers they have ever had." And she just says that she supports Coach Quinlan in her decision, but I would like for you to think about what we're losing if we lose a teacher like Darcy Quinlan. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I believe we also have one other, and that is Mr. Kramer.
Yes, thank you very much for your time this evening. I'm gonna piggyback off this pancake here. Mine also is about concerning Darcy's leave of absence as well. When I moved here two years ago, I had my choices in schools. Growing up in the area and still have a family here, I did a lot of research in where I wanted my kids to go. I chose Columbia for a few reasons, reasons such as school dedicated to teaching kids not only math, science, or social studies, but of being a better person, a town committed to a feeling of community. When I moved here, my son was a senior, and daughter was a sophomore. Neither one knew anyone except for family. My daughter played soccer, so she was introduced to Coach Quinlan, and they had a special bond ever since. Coach Quinlan supports her players beyond soccer. She supports them in their schoolwork, other activities, and personal struggles. My son was her teacher. The guidance and influence she has provided was invaluable and made my son a better person. As a single parent, a lot of time, you surround yourself with positive people that you, that the kids can have the best influence possible. Ms. Quinlan is a very positive influence. Losing her at Columbia would be a detriment to the school system. She touches lives not only in high school soccer program, but also very impressionistic middle school students. Columbia School District is better with Ms. Quinlan in it. On website, the quote, "There needs to be a lot more emphasis on what a child can do instead of what a child cannot do." Darcy embraces this and demonstrates it through contributions to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you both. You know, the idea of public input, like I said, we want to hear from people, that doesn't mean we're gonna tell you what we are going to do or what's already been done, but we do appreciate you coming out. We always appreciate seeing people at board meetings. So, again, thank you very much. Item number eight, I don't believe we needed first executive session. Under item seven, also, we have an open forum to discuss the use of IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act funds. These funds are provided for use in the education of students with disabilities in our school district. Public input as to how these funds are to be allocated may be shared for consideration at this meeting. Any input? Anyone on the board? Okay, here are none. Now, item number eight. I don't believe there's a need still for a first executive session. So, we move to item number nine.
Consider approving the May 2014 financial reports.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Yeah, there is a whole discussion, I have some. Lori, just a couple quick questions on the reconciliation. There's three items, and I'm just not sure what they are. Which are the type of the MSFs?
Those are checks that have been returned to us for non-sufficient funds that we have not been able to collect at this point.
Okay, I thought that's what they were, but I wasn't really sure if that's what it was. Okay. And from looking at the monthly board report, we are still showing positive revenues, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions on that. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number 10.
Make a motion to approve temporary appropriation resolution for fiscal year 2015, to cover the period of July 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2014, as listed below.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lauren?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 11.
I make a motion to approve the final appropriation resolution for fiscal year 14, as submitted by the treasurer. Total appropriations, all fund types, includes prior year carryover. Zero. I'm sorry. Great.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 12.
Make a motion to approve the final amended certificate of the estimated resources for fiscal year 14, as submitted by the treasurer. Total resources, all fund types, 15,755,672.
I shall second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call?
Lauren?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
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 Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 14.
Make a motion to consider approving compensation rates for substitute employees for the 2014-15 school year, as listed below.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Lauren?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 16.
Let's make a motion to consider adopting resolution concerning the drug abuse resistance education data program. As listed below.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Roll call?
Lauren?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 17.
Make a motion to consider approving the 2014-15 drug testing program provided with this agenda.
Second that.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Karen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
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 Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 19.
I move to consider approving employment of the following personnel on a supplemental contract for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials, as listed below.
Discussion? Discussion? I have myself, all I'll tell you is that the licensures for all supplementals are verified before they go on the agenda. Let you know, when you see their name on the agenda for their licensure for supplementals, they are licensed, check through Mrs. Bacon's central office, and they're licensed to coach. Good. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Whitmer?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
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 Yes.
Item number 23. Motion passes. Item number 23.
I move to consider approving employment of Darcy Quinlan on a supplemental contract I move to consider approving employment of Darcy Quinlan on a supplemental contract for the 2014-15 school year as head varsity girls soccer coach as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number twenty-four.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of Ernie Accaronas, director, supervisor of the coach of pupil activity program, the head varsity boys soccer coach for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by superintendent with compensation in accordance with the board approved schedule pending verification of all credentials.
I shall second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item number twenty-five.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of Niran Michelle as director, supervisor, coach of a pupil activity program such as head varsity girls basketball coach for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with the board approved schedule pending verification of all credentials.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-six.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of Chris Canal as the director, supervisor, or coach of the pupil activity program, head high school wrestling coach for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with the board approved schedule pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-seven.
I move to consider approving the following personnel as volunteer for a pupil activity program for the 13-14 school year as recommended by the superintendent as listed below.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-eight.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials. Substitution, post-staff change.
I shall second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number twenty-nine.
Make a motion to consider approving the following personnel as volunteer for a pupil activity program for the 2000-14-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent. For football will be William Tyler Best, cross-country, Crystal Zambito, Bones.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine passes. Item number thirty.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel for the 2014-15 school year in the excepted positions as listed below.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number thirty-one.
I move to consider approving employment of Jenny Moore as grade one teacher for the 14-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
We'd like to meet and welcome Jenny to the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Motion passes. Most of them have been voted for. Number thirty-two.
Let them make a motion to consider approving employment of Katie Maloney as grade two teacher for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
I shall second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Katie will offer the staff. Item number thirty-three.
I shall make a motion to consider approving the employment of Courtney Schifauer as Title One teacher for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number thirty-four.
Like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Christine Lafficke as intervention specialist E D unit for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number thirty-five.
I move to consider approving employment of Ryan Holmes as high school middle school intervention specialist for the 14-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item thirty-six.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of Ryan Wolf as high school English arts teacher for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
I shall second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item thirty-seven.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of Justin Hoffman as middle school custodian, five point five hours per day from three to eight thirty P M for the 2013-14 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation at board approved rates and retroactive the first day work pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item thirty-eight.
Like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Peggy Mills as a middle school cook, four hours per day from nine A M. to one P M. for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation at board approved rates pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item thirty-nine.
I move to consider approving employment of Robert State as part-time high school teacher for the 14-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item forty.
Make a motion to consider approving an agreement for Vitality Wellness Services with Wellness I Q. at the cost of two dollars and thirty-five cents per employee per month with P A S C. Covering the remainder of the Vitality program effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th through 2015.
I shall second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Item forty-one, President's Report, I'm sure you're all happy with that. I've got a few comments. First of all, I want to really thank Marcy and her entire special ed staff for the good job, fantastic job that they've been doing. I sat in this room, was it two years ago or three years ago, at a very difficult meeting. And I think a lot of credit goes to you for the work that you've done. And I think you've shown everybody that we could do it here. Not that it was necessarily the perfect situation at the time, you've done a great job, and I think we should all thank you and commend you. Dixon, Kim, I think the fact that the third grade reading guarantee has apparently worked pretty well for us is really something great for all of your teaching staff. I think it shows the commitment of the teachers, the non-teaching staff, the A's, the students, and their parents, and you also. So again, congratulations, a good job. Southside Middle School, I think two students going to Neo UCOM is pretty neat at that young age to see what it would be like to have a medical career. And Lance, as far as the high school, same thing. I still think it's a great idea for kids to see what a career might look like. So I think that's great. It's Grade A fun. Jason, who I think has took his leave of, taken a leave of absence from us. I'm hoping I hear a lot more about that in the coming meetings. So I think that's great that we've gotten this far. Congratulations to all of the athletes, the spring sport athletes. I think all of them have done a commendable job. Some might have had better records than others, but I think they all put out a lot of effort. So again, congratulations to all of them. And I would like to take this opportunity once again to welcome both Jenny and Katie to Columbiana. You're now Clippers. And we'd also like to welcome everyone that is not here this evening. I think that our, you will find that our teachers, our administrators, our chief administrator do a great job. They make our job on the Board of Education easy. So again, thank you and welcome to the staff. Other than that, I really do want to thank the two, Wendy and Sean, for being with us